Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to this joint meeting of the Squim School Board of Directors and Squim City Council. And the first order will be a brief introduction, and I'll start with myself. I am the Mayor of Squim, Brandon Janice. I've been on the city council for over seven years now.
Hi, Squatchy. Vicky Lowe since Nastah Teethlam New Skl. I am since Nuhak. My name is Vicky Lowe. I'm Jamestown Sklalum in Belo Kula First Nations. And I am Squim City Council Position Three, and I've been on council for about two and a half years. But I've lived in Squim all my life.
Eric Pickens. Been on the school board for five years and have been board president for the last three years? Three years, yeah.
Michael Roca. Been on the Squim School Board for almost two years.
I'm Kathy Downer. I'm on Squim City Council. I think Vicky and I started at the same time. Thank you.
I'm Pat Johnston, and I have been on the school board for almost three years.
I'm Maren Halverson, and I'm Vice President of the School Board, and I've been on the board, I think, about two and a half years.
I'm Regan Nichols, Superintendent of Squim School District, and I've been with the district now for just about two years.
Larry Jeffries. I've been on the school board for about five years and lived in Squim now officially for 13 years.
I am Rachel Anderson. I've lived in Squim pretty much all my life, except for a couple of years in my young adult era. And I've been on council for a few years, three years, I think, and happy to say I am Deputy Mayor of my hometown.
I'm Amelia Nelson. I've lived in Squim for around four years, and I've been on the city council for five months, six months.
I'm Georgia Bullard. I've been in Squim since I was in fourth grade, so eight, nine years now, and I'm youth liaison.
I'm Nicole Hartman. I've been on the Squim City Council for, what, two months? That's I'm so I'm the newbie. I've lived in Greater Squim for 15 years and have been in the city limits now for four. Day job is Communications Manager at the PUD.
Okay, moving on, I guess next thing will be to just briefly go over what our council retreat priorities were from our retreat. So briefly, we'll go over them, and if any other counselors want to go into any more detail, they're welcome to pitch in. So the main thing. Oh, sure, if you want to, yeah.
So I want to thank the school board and superintendent for joining us. I just think it's really important that we work together for our communities and especially our youth and making sure that we're providing enough opportunities for them. So we were, as Brandon said, we're going to share our priorities, and then we want to hear from you guys, and then really hoping we can think, you know, again, about what our partnerships are and how we work together for the best outcomes for our community. Thank you.
Okay, so basically, when we went and had our council retreat, what came out of our SWOT analysis were a different topic. So our weakness that came out of it was our infrastructure needs to catch up with our growth. And so some of the next steps that we're looking to take are turning focus from city building infrastructure to community infrastructure, emphasizing roads, re-engaging with our lobbyists, because obviously a lot of things are outside of our control that needs, that we need help, obviously, whether it's Washington DC or in Olympia. Reviewing our zoning and, you know, holding constructive conversation with city staff. Also, recognize a weakness for lack of workforce housing and affordable housing. We've identified opportunities in comprehensive plan update, which we're going through right now in our comprehensive plan review and update. We've also identified another opportunity in capitalizing on our strengths, whether it's staff, council, citizens, community spirit of unity. Threats, climate change, along with adverse state legislative action, whether it's unfunded mandates, such things like that. Lack of housing, again, I think that's a reoccurring theme that we were all keenly aware of, and unchecked growth. I think that can be, that we're looking to address that during our comprehensive plan review as well. And looking at that, if there's any other counselors that want to go into any further detail or have any comments on that, or Matt, if you wanted to address that as well?
No, thank you. Matt Hirsch, the City Manager. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for coming over. So, no, this is the work of council and their retreat. We had a facilitator here helping kind of lead their retreat, and so they had their eight priorities on the left, and then there was time left in the retreat, and he then said, what do you see as the next step? Or what might, what might you like to add on to that priority? That's what the next steps is. And so that was, those were also councils' items, kind of thoughts on next steps per their, the left-bolded, black font priorities. We have since then, and I don't mean to distract from this, but we have since then as a staff, because our job is operations, we had a retreat following their retreat, and we looked at this document, and we have come up with operation, kind of an operation plan on how to implement this so that, and we have a work study set up with council in the next couple of weeks to share that and make sure that what we as staff thought we could do to implement their priorities and actually put a work plan around it, we'll get their input and finalize that document. So what you don't see is some work that staff has done to actually, like I said, implement or operationalize their priorities. So that's really all I, my only input is I'm kind of on the operations side of the city, and of course, council's on the policy side. So this is their policy, and we will hopefully be able to add some operational work plan items to this in the next couple of weeks. Is that what you wanted, Mayor? I'm not sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I just hoping we can have conversation. I know that, like, housing is a big issue for us, and I assume probably for you all, you know, youth houselessness, but also just workforce housing. And I know it's important to have good school systems, good staff at the schools, and if we don't have appropriate housing, that makes your jobs very difficult. So any thoughts that you guys have or things that you're hearing that you think would be important for us to know? I know that there's efforts to build a youth home with the Joe Rantz Foundation. I don't know how involved you guys are with that. And so just things that we want to know from you that we can help support.
Yeah, just to share, I think there's certainly a lot of alignment there, definitely for some of our students that are in need, for sure, but also our, as you know, our funding comes from enrollment as well. And so the ability for families to move in and have a home that is affordable continues to be a challenge, and of course, that affects enrollment as well. And so with enrollment is funding, and so we want to be able to basically still provide services for our students, programs for our students, maintain existing programs, but also enhance where we can. And so it's sort of this, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg sort of thing, because you have, you want nice facilities, nice schools to attract families, but then you, you know, with declining enrollment, it's kind of, you know, you have less funding. So definitely can see some, quite a bit of alignment as it relates to housing, housing needs, for sure. But I would invite anyone else to add if you would like.
I would just say also remember staff housing. We have a number of positions that we are starting to see a slightly uptick to numbers and folks applying with us, which is great news, but I do think the numbers would grow if housing on the peninsula was more accessible. It is a concern for people.
And I would just add to that, that I, being on the school board side of things rather than the city council side of things, I'd be interested to know how much, how much control there is of the kind of housing that does get built in our area, whether or not it is affordable, and if that has to do with zoning or other kinds of initiatives, but that would be something I'd like to know more about, because there's lots of different kind of housing, and there's housing that's, you know, for vacationers, and there's housing for people who can afford it. And so I'm just interested to know how we can open it up to more folks who are just regular wage earners who might work for the district or might have kids in the district.
I must say that a lot of that is out of the purview of the city council. We have zoning, we have, actually have very good zoning. What we have done since I've been on council, since Vicky and I have been on, is we have tweaked the ADU. You know what ADU is, an accessory dwelling unit? We have tweaked that ordinance. We have allowed people to live in commercial buildings. If the building faces Washington Street, they can only live upstairs. If the commercial building faces the side street, they can live downstairs also. So we've tried to do everything we can. We refer people to the Silver Nest Program, which is in a process right now, again, of changing. Our county does have some of that. We don't duplicate services, like for homeless people, there is a lot of more services in Port Angeles. They could take a free bus from here to there. We don't really have a lot of homeless. We have churches that help, but we have not really addressed the homeless issue. And there's really no use in duplicating services because of the money is pretty tight. We've tried to do what we can for housing. If somebody can figure out how to make a developer build a $300,000 house instead of a $700,000 house, I will pay you myself, because we just can't make people do that, you know? And right now, we have, and I knew this would happen, I didn't realize how it would affect being on city council, but the baby boomers are all retiring at the same time. Some people have just paid cash for their houses because they bought their houses in the 60s and sold them recently, and they're worth a lot more money in some states than they are here. And so they come into Squim because it's a beautiful, beautiful place, close to a national park, and they pay cash for a house. And there's nothing, we can't stop them. We can't, you know, make them be younger. We are getting an imbalance of older people and people with small children, but it's hard for somebody that works here to pay the gas money and the babysitting to live outside, out of town and drive in every day. I know we have a pretty good bus system, but that's a lot of cost on somebody who may not make a very high wage to begin with, to pay for car repairs, transportation, housing, you know, two cities away. So if anybody has any ideas, Habitat for Humanity is already committed to building 55 workforce housing units in Squim. Now, there's a difference between the definition of affordable housing and workforce housing. As you probably know, affordable housing is the 30 to 50% of the area median income, and workforce housing is 80% of the area median income. So the people that are only 30% of the area median income, they don't even qualify for the Habitat houses, because Habitat does not rent, they purchase. But those will be great townhouses with parking underneath, main living and bedrooms on top. There'll be a park, there'll be a laundry area, they will be maybe with a half a mile within a bus stop. Those are, it's a great idea, and they cannot sell it for a profit. So that will be, but that's only 55 units. Hopefully, in the future, after that, there'll be more. We need more housing like that, and I don't know what to do to get people to build that. You know, Habitat's a nonprofit. They don't make money on it.
Harmony has joined us online, and she has her hand raised. So Harmony?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. I'm grateful for Zoom, that's allowing me to participate here virtually from work. So thank you. I'm wondering, since we're having this conversation as a group, what are some ways that, as a city, we can communicate that a priority would be for apartment buildings to be created in our city? Maybe that's a conversation that we'd be having with Lindsay and the staff, or wondering, you mentioned all of the great things that have been happening with the zoning, Kathy. Thank you so much for recapping that. Yeah, so that's, that's what's popping into my mind. What about apartment buildings? How do we, how do we communicate that that's a priority for our city?
I think we are seeing more development of that, such, and it's getting better as we engage with our lobbyists and its changes in Olympia, because before, you know, until recently, we didn't qualify for certain tax rebates that allowed, you know, developers that wanted to build multifamily to get rebates, like in PA or different places. So we're seeing more multifamily development go in, like over by Adagio and stuff like that, but it's still getting those developers that come in. So we need to keep working on attracting those developers. So we continue to engage with our lobbyists, continue to make sure our zoning is up the code, you know, that allows it, and they'll keep trickling in, so.
I think, oh, I'm sorry. I think Kathy's right, though, that, you know, part of the problem is, like you said, how do you incentivize people in the private sector to do all these things that need to be done? First, the developers to purchase the property, go through, I mean, there are things that the city and the county can do to streamline permitting and that kind of thing. We can't control the cost of building materials. We also have, this is a chicken and egg thing again, too. We have, people have a hard time hiring laborers, and so especially to take on a big project like that, and you need electricians, and you need plumbers, and you need framers, and you need drywall people, and you need to be able to have a reliable workforce who can get that work done at the time that it needs to be done. And one thing we are doing in the school district is we are trying to focus on, on developing our CTE program, and hopefully we'll be, you know, in the future, people will be graduating who are prepared to fit, fill in some of those kinds of jobs, but it's, you know, that's challenging. And so a person who is looking at taking on that kind of a project is looking at all of those variables and has to make the decision that it's sensible for them to do that. And I think the other thing, and I know Michael owns some rental properties and people own, you know, people who have owned rental properties in the past, it's challenging to be a landlord. A lot of people don't want to take on that responsibility because it's expensive and things get broken and things get, you know, you got to make it pencil out to have the rent pay for your expenses. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not, this isn't unique to Squim. I mean, this is the problem everywhere, you know? And I think those are real concerns, and I'm, certainly in Seattle, I think a lot of people have had the feeling that the law is so unfavorable to landlords that, you know, if people really think twice about, am I willing to, you know, do I want to rent out a house and, and deal with that, you know? Other people might, might not view it that way, but I know certainly that's another factor that people think about. So it's a lot, and, you know, it doesn't mean that it's not doable and that we shouldn't be trying to think of what are the things that we can do, you know? And like I said, from the school district's perspective, you know, trying to help provide workers who are going to be job-ready to work on some of these projects would be fantastic for our students and fantastic for the, for the community. But yeah, I don't know. That's just my thoughts on that.
The city also excused the park impact fee on new builds if that building is going to be workforce housing, thinking that it might stimulate developers to keep that in mind, and nothing has happened since then. So I'm not sure what else, you know, because everybody that lives here is going to use the parks. We have wonderful parks. We will continue to have wonderful parks, but I just thought it would be kind of a painless thing to do just to get some apartment buildings or workforce housing built. And then, and it was, and it has a sunshine clause. It expires in, well, actually, it'll be four years now. It expires in four years. So let's hope that somebody, we could build another whole building like Elk Creek, which is out past the Adagio Coffee Shop, and we would still have a waiting list for people that need housing. But if we could get somebody to come in and build an apartment building, that, you know, that would help. So the city, and, and with feedback from the developers, two years ago, the city did streamline their permitting process. They got feedback, they sat down, the developers told them what was working, what wasn't working, and since then, the developers and the contractors have been much, much happier. But are they happy enough to build something that is not going to make them a lot of money? Habitat will, will not go broke building the apartments that they're planning, but they still need the money to do it. They can't start a project until they have a certain percentage of what they're going to need. Thank you.
And so we're getting ready to update our comprehensive plan, which is a big deal, and some things I think about that probably are partially not legal, but the attorney's not here yet. Like, when we, we don't even know what, how much housing we need, you know? We, we've needed all level of housings. I say we probably don't have enough houses for the high-income people who are moving in, and then, so they're buying the housing that the lower income, and then it goes down to the bottom where the people on the bottom get bumped out of housing. So any housing that gets built is going to help, but when we build big developments, can we require a percentage of that to be workforce housing or work with the developers and let them know how that important that is? Because that's what's gone on here, is we got all these big developments, and nobody thought about where workforce housing was going to happen in that. So, you know, I just, if that's something that needs to happen legislatively, is that something you guys can partner? I know we have a lobbyist, I don't know if you have one, I know I've seen you in Olympia. Are those the kind of things we can partner with our legislators on, really pushing for things that make sense, that actually help our community?
We just had a meeting last night of our long-range facilities planning group and heard about demographics moving into 2030, 2040, and up to 2050. And what we're hearing is that we're not going to see a significant influx of school-age children, but certainly the demographic you've already spoken to of retirees is going to grow. I do think housing inventory is an issue, certainly when people are house hunting. I like what you just had to say about the roll-down. If you don't find something at the top of your buying range, you will go to the next one, and you end up with a squeeze. So I do think us continuing to talk about housing inventory, it is affecting the school district, there's no doubt, it's from the enrollment side, but also the staffing side. So we'd be interested in knowing, too. Question that's running through my mind is, do you have an idea of what inventory is utilized right now for the short-term rentals for Airbnb, for instance? What is that percentage looking like, if you know?
So I'm happy to address that a little bit. And Lindsay also, she's our new director of our planning or community development department. She's remote today, so she's also online and might have some input. But number four on this agenda is, because this is really what stimulated Regan and I, me, Corley, and I was telling her about all the development that was coming, she goes, oh, I think our whole board needs to hear that. So number four is that we will talk about, and we will pull up an interactive PDF that I think I've shared with you already, but that's useful at some point to see, I think it's over 650-something housing units, which can be individual, single-family, or all the way up to a fourplex by the new state code and law. So, so, you know, you divide that by four, and it won't be all fourplexes, but it, that's a big number, and that's not counting a new development that's under consideration and just came into the city on the west side or east side, so, which is another 500 to 600 units. So there is, the inventory is going to lift. Now, what price range those will be in, you know, it'll probably be more market, but whatever that means. So that's just my comments relative to the comments that have been made so far about housing inventory and what's coming and what's not. So, you know, another 1,200 housing units probably in the next number of years. Back to your question about short-term rentals, I know the Planning Commission has been talking about taking that under their consideration for the council, but we haven't done any kind of formal assessment, haven't hired a consultant or anybody to do what's really in the market and, you know, relative to short-term rentals yet. I know that's very controversial, and no one has the right answer for the right number or the right policy or whatever, so it just hasn't, hasn't been accomplished yet by the city, so, yeah.
Yeah, I was just listening to the discussion, one of the, I drive in every day to the city, spend my money, because this is where the economic environment, but I do not live in the city. I live in the unincorporated county area where most of our district sits. In fact, our population within that district is about 30,000 people and covers two counties. And what goes on out there affects Squim, obviously, because it puts more demand on what's going on in the schools and in our businesses. And then what goes on in Squim influences what happens out there in the county. Like, one of the developments, I don't know if you were talking about, you know, there's a large, two, 300-home development in the Carlsborg area, which is not part of the city. So the discussion I would like to see happen is between the city council, the Squim School Board, the county, economic about what's going on, because we, we service or serve a very much larger area than just the city, but the city has a significant impact on what's going on in the county. And so it's, it's one of those discussions that we need to keep an eye on, what can we do together? You know, there are obviously areas that we don't have any control over, but the impact within the school district is, you know, it incorporates Port Angeles and Squim zip codes, and it incorporates Clalum County and Jefferson County. So we, we have a different demographics that we need to look at sometimes, but at the same time, it's all the same demographic, because we all come. All those county folk come into town and shop.
And, and I think number five will be, we'll be talking about our comprehensive plan. Regan, that's a lot like your strategic plan going forward. What are your forecasts, and what are you, what are you thinking that's coming relative to enrollment or whatever, you know? And so we'll, we can talk about that when we get there, but that's our strategic plan for the next 20 years that we're in the middle of. So we'll talk about that when we get there, but you'll want to pay attention to that and participate in that process, all of you, so.
I just wanted to also answer your question. We, mostly Washington is zoned for single-family homes. We do have one zone in Squim that is zoned for, allows duplexes, but nobody built any, very few duplexes. And we do have, there are short-term rentals and vacation bed and breakfasts allowed, but they're supposed to be licensed. Whether or not, we're in the same situation as Port Angeles with no enforcement of those licensures or nobody following up. Whether or not we're in the same situation as Port Angeles with no enforcement of those licensures or nobody following up on, you know, I mean, how the housing is being used, I do not know. It's not something that has come up since I've been on council.
Can I ask about the ADUs? I think that you said that one of the things you had done was maybe loosen up the requirements for ADUs. Have you noticed an uptick in those? No, because it's
I don't think so. Have we, Brandon?
Not that I'm aware of, but probably that'd be if Lindsay had any knowledge of it, but I'm not sure if she does with her short time. Yeah.
Permitting and and things like that actually don't go through council. The land issues go to the hearing examiner and permits go through the planning commission.
Lindsay.
Thank you, Mayor. We have not seen an uptick in building permits for ADUs since that zoning change last year.
I I noticed I talked to somebody over PA, I think, who said that PA and I and I know the county also makes plant basically pre-approved plans available for ADUs. Does the city have that as well? Because that seems like a great, I mean, that to me, ADUs seem like a really good option because there you can build them inexpensively. It doesn't you don't it doesn't require as much of a commitment in terms of like buying another piece of property and you're there on site. And I don't know, it just seems to me that it's there's a lot of advantages to that. And and I thought it was a great idea that you could basically buy pre-approved plans, you know, I mean, obviously, so you have to get septic or sewer or whatever, all that, you know, hooked up. But that might be something worth looking into just because the county and, like I said, PA, I think already do it.
Actually, the plans are not that much. What's I think what I hear is holding up people, it's hooking up to water and sewer. It's the hookup fee.
Right.
And that's what discourages people from.
Yeah.
But I don't know that that's true. Is this what I'm hearing?
I guess, and I've seen this in town. My concern would be people plopping ADUs in their backyard just to for rental income or Airbnb, VRBO type things. I did see in the Peninsula Daily News this morning that the city of Port Angeles will be holding a webinar. I'd have to look at it again to see what the date was, but it is on their new portal for people to register VRBO and Airbnb. And there's a lottery system. And I was planning on watching that webinar because I think it'll be really interesting to kind of see what their experience is. The other thing tomorrow morning on EDC's Coffee with Colleen, Mike McLeir and somebody else are going to be speaking about the housing market. So that might be interesting to kind of check out as well because we we don't know what's are the demographics that you saw of not expecting a lot of influx of families with children because of the housing or, you know, are we putting the cart before the horse? But I I would be really interested in knowing what percentage we have of the unregistered VRBO and Airbnbs as well. I was talking to a couple of traveling nurses last week who there's people that will come here in RVs as well and they don't have anywhere to park them. So it's an additional option, but there's no room.
Malia has something to say.
I know that transportation is a really big expense for a school district. And I was wondering that if these new housing affordable or not, these new housing developments take place outside of city limits, even though they are in district limits. Does the school district have a model or a figure that predicts like how these new developments will affect those that transportation cost? Because that means that even if only a couple of kids live in that area, the school buses have to drive all the way out there. And I know a couple of kids live in like Diamond Point or closer to Forks and it's a really huge cost for their families if they can't get on the buses.
Great question. So we have routing software for our buses. And so we can actually right now look at a map and our school district is covered by bus routes. So typically, any type of development that would be built, we probably already have a bus running on it. So that would work. The issue becomes what happens if that is already a full bus? Okay, so the routing software helps us evaluate. Once we know how many students would likely get on at that stop, we can efficiently move routes so that we might have less of a run because the bus fills faster due to a development. And that's the type of work we would be doing. But our coverage, I'll call it, is pretty strong right now.
Okay, I'm gonna move us down the agenda here. So move on to item three, the school board strategic planning goals.
Great, thank you. So I'll just open this up and our school board members can speak to this. And we did have participation from students as well. So you guys could weigh in if you'd like to as well. We had a set of sessions last year where we looked at what our district was striving to accomplish and what types of goals would help us get there. And so we do have phase one of our strategic plan done. Phase two will be incorporating educator input for objectives so that the actual roadmap is one that they feel is best doable and is responsive to what student needs are right now in this era. And then we'll also have student voice involved because students, of course, know what they are hoping for out of their education, especially at the upper levels. And it's pretty inspiring to listen to them speak about what they wish for their schools. So we did have a plan and we went ahead to activate a design team with community members and we have created the first phase. I think what's most important to also know about our strategic plan is that we have outcomes that we want for student competencies so that when you graduate, you are graduating with a set of aptitudes, skills and understanding so you can go out in the world because one thing that the students as well as the planning group had to say was we want to have students prepared for real life. It's not all about book learning, but we need to make sure we have a comprehensive look. So you'll see there that we have core competencies, flexibility and adaptability. It's really important in this type of a world that you're able to do that. Critical thinking matters at every turn, of course. And then you'll see perseverance, resilience and self management. And as you hear about schools today, we hear more and more about the self management side. Think of all of the polls on students that we never had as students in our classrooms. Just think of technology alone. The fact that we had a COVID era and we had students who had education differently and needed to come back and reintegrate. And we have different levels of how students have opportunities in their lives that in our era may not have been as strong. So we have students with many, many priorities. So our goals, academic excellence is number one, and we really are striving to improve the achievement levels in our schools. Then we are looking at pathways to graduation and beyond. And that really speaks to what we spoke about workforce development and recognizing that we need to have multiple roads for student success. And I'd also like to emphasize here, students don't need to be on just one road. We should be able to have a flexible school system that allows students to try things out, see what what might touch them as a career, but what else might touch them is just wanting those skills for life and offering that. A cultural and civic responsibility, making sure that we're having experiences built in where students are serving their communities, their understanding that Squim is yet one microcosm of a much larger world and really expect global levels of understanding. And then community and volunteer partnerships. We want to continue to grow the number of businesses, partnerships with higher education, volunteerism, so that we are building those inroads so folks can come in as much as we are sending students out. I think once we moved through the process, we recognized that there was a great interest in what a 21st education, 21st century education should look like. The interesting part is we're already a quarter of the way into it. So it's really important that we continue to look ahead very quickly because the experience, for instance, AI right now, Washington State OSPI is interested in becoming a leader in AI integration in our schools. And we're going to be working toward getting our system in a mode of readiness to just have the conversations we need to be having, talking about what the options could even be in any given five year span. Just to look that close can be substantial. So we have a lot to discuss. I think what's most important, though, is academic excellence is something that when all students have that, they have many opportunities to come. So we recognize we need to grow.
Can you talk a little bit more about what academic excellence looks like? Because I know that children, youth learn differently. I don't think, you know, when I was growing up, I know I'm a little older than you. There was like one level of expectation, either you met it or you didn't. And I think we don't live in that same kind of world. So how does academic excellence really include all kinds of learners?
Well, number one, it's academic excellence for you. So when you have that theme in your mind, we really are focusing on how we're helping students grow. So we have benchmarks and I'll give you a couple of those as examples. All the research points to the fact that students should be reading on grade level by grade three. If the rest of your school system is going to work for that child optimally. So we're putting a lot of energy into our early literacy programming. When you have students who are struggling to learn to read, we are putting in place interventions. So we have programs within the school day where students are identified and we provide extra resources and help. And then we also have an after school tutorial program so that we're focused on exactly the skills that we're seeing and data show us that they need the help. When you move along the spectrum, we're really going to be working on writing being more of an emphasis in our system because writing is really thinking on paper. And it helps us to understand what students are thinking about in their education and just the challenge of writing alone, having enough practice for that. Excellence in that regard is that we're having experiences that every student is exposed. They're given the chance to try it out. They're having an intervention when it isn't working necessarily as well. And then if it continues to be a struggle, we also have special education services that actually tailor programs for students. And we measure their achievement based on those tailored IEP plans. So individualizing education is certainly a goal in that arena. There are some school systems in the nation that have individualized education plans for every single student. And I think that is incredibly aspirational and honestly, what public education should be tracking toward. I think there's a long way to go in that because you don't have a static population in public schools, right? You have students who are moving in and out. And so you have to have a baseline program that is responsive to kids and you can't necessarily personalize everything. But I do think we have many opportunities for students that are unique, especially when they get into secondary school. And you'll start seeing in middle school that will have increased opportunity around career and technical education.
Notes on that topic?
I guess just one thing to share specifically came up during the process of creating this was around the core competencies and Superintendent Nichols spoke to this, but as we thought about what was going to happen, what we were actually preparing students for, there was especially, let's just say, a first grader, second grader, what kind of career are we preparing them for? A lot of unknowns there, right? As so, but what's not unknown, and that's that's where the core competency is about making sure that flexibility, adaptability, you know, perseverance. It doesn't matter. Those things are going to be certainly required. And so that struck me when you're talking about the academic excellence aspect is building in those skills, that's going to be a key component to the success of our students. Regardless regardless what what job they take, or maybe it's a career change. 10 years after graduation, those skills will still hold true. And so making sure that those are embedded and focused on throughout our entire system from from PK on up to high school. So yeah, just want to share that.
And I had a quick question about the community volunteer partnerships, part of the school board's goals. I'm not quite sure if you guys have, you know, taken the dive to work on that goal yet, but some of you probably know I've I'm quite passionate about volunteering. And so this is one of the ones that really piques my interest. You know, my kids and I went to the planning meetings and had a really great time. And so I focused a lot on them volunteering, starting them young to learn a strong work ethic and reliability. And so the volunteer partnerships is what really piqued my interest in the goals. Curious to know what kinds of partners you're looking for, you know, like the city, are you looking for partnerships with private organizations or nonprofits? Just really curious to hear a little bit more about that.
We have three main areas we're working on right now. We have the publication just about to happen of a volunteer directory. So we actually have worked with a community partner to help identify who out in the community has specialties that they would be willing to offer to the schools. And we put that into a directory document. And so teachers, for instance, could look through the directory and say, hey, I'd like to have a speaker with this expertise and invite the person in. So we've moved on that. Secondly, we are working very hard now. With school funding issues, it's important to be looking for other means of revenue. And so we're looking at many competitive grants. And most of those require community partners. So we've worked right now, just today, I was working with the Peninsula Tennis Club. We're writing a grant for resurfacing our courts. We've certainly worked with the tribe. We have ideas where we can come to you. And we came to you at one point around the CTE center. And so that level of community partnership is going to be essential moving forward. And then thirdly, right now, we do see the the momentum around CTE. And we're interested in identifying tradespeople who would be willing to come in and teach shorter modules to students, especially around construction trades. So that students have exposure to real world, in the moment, relevant trades expertise. But it doesn't last for an entire semester. And we're hoping that that flexibility would allow more folks in the work to be able to take a moment in time and share their time with us. So those are three ways we're working right now. Thank you so much.
All right, item four, development projects that could impact Squim School District enrollment.
So I can address this a little bit, just very briefly. I don't know if you want to throw that slide up. Amy is our clerk and so she wants to show you a slide. We've this slide was developed by internally. We've used it in our state of the city presentations to some groups around town and what are kind of our annual presentation. And it's a moving target, but basically this is what I was mentioning before Reagan, when we met. We're gonna we're gonna hit that hyperlink in a second that the and so I can show you what where those 13 developments are. But currently we have 13 13 developments that are in the process. Between those 13 developments, they make up almost 700 lots, housing lots. And there's 84 multifamily, you can see that. And it covers a full kind of inventory or continuum from housing for humanity and as well as there's townhouses. And then, of course, a lot of single families. So if if we click this, and this is available publicly, it's on our website and whatnot. So you're welcome to go to it. But by clicking that, it's an interactive site. And then as you scroll down and maybe sit there for a second, you can see the 13 on the left side, you can see the 13 developments by name. And then you can kind of blow this up and you can see where those 13 developments are located. You can zoom in. You can zoom into this and move this map around. And then if you want to get even more nuclear or, you know, micro into any of those units, just scroll down. And all 13 of those developments are outlined in here. So zoom out a little bit, but hold on just a second. So yeah, so you can see the purple, so that's the name of the unit. You can see where that development is relative to the city boundaries or whatever. And then you can see how that development, that purple, if you will, or pink, what it looks like lot-wise or plot-wise. And so as you scroll down, all 13 of those developments are in here. And it shows the kind of what their proposal is for housing. So I think Reagan, this is where we started, and you were kind of wondering, I wonder how that will impact our schools. Or, you know, and again, we don't know if these will be single families or if these will be duplexes or some combination. But this is what's on the books or kind of in some form of progress at this point. So, and a lot of these, you're seeing them being developed around town right now. So, and some are still in the works, in the planning stages. And this doesn't address the 500 to 600 unit one that is still in the pre-application stage. But we'll be able to go more public with that one in a couple of weeks after their pre-application meeting. So, but between these 700 and another 500 to 600, you know, I think what Vicky's comment was earlier is a lot has to do with, we just need more inventory. And as we get that, it will just help, no matter what level it is. It's the full continuum. I'm in a townhouse because I couldn't find a house. So, and I've been there two and a half years, and maybe I'll stay. I never planned on that, but it's worked out fine. But that's just because there was nothing available when I got here two and a half years ago. So I think it's just inventory. So we wanted to share that with you so that you had a sense of, and you can spend time, go back in there. Again, it's publicly available. And it might be worth you as a board looking at and considering, I don't know whether it's on transportation routes for buses or locations of additional, you know, school or whatever. But that's where we're sitting for the next, you know, three to 10 years.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Does the city have any control over whether or not somebody chooses to make a development a 55 and over development?
Well, I'll let Lindsay answer that. But that's, they usually come in with that as, so they create kind of a HOA. And go ahead, Lindsay, I suppose that's part of planning.
Yeah, part of me wants to say, let me get back to you and double-check the code. But I did ask that question. And typically, that is left to the developer as they develop their HOAs and their, what we call in the planning world, CCNRs. Their conditions, covenants, and restrictions for their development. It is not something that we, I believe, is not something that we currently have codified.
So I'm happy to answer any other questions. But this is, I think, what the mayor wanted us to just present to you. So you had a general overview of what we're seeing as a city as future growth. And again, the next, I don't want to move further down the agenda, but you'll see that our strategic plan is our comp plan. And we'll talk about that in just a second. But that's, you'll find a lot more data when we're done with that. We're about, not quite halfway through. It's an 18-month process, and we'll be done by mid-next year. And, but that involves a lot of community involvement. I'm sure they'll probably want to meet with you. They're meeting with the residents. There's a lot of community engagement so that they kind of look at the trends like Vicky mentioned earlier. What are our current housing stock and inventory? And what are the needs along the full continuum from affordable to, you know, marketplace? And we'll have a lot of that information in the next 18 months.
I do just have a quick interruption. I do have a prior commitment, but I just want to say thank you for all the school board members for being here, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
I guess I just had a follow-up question with what Lindsay had just shared about. Typically, that's something that was up to the developer, I think, is the practice. It's not something that, I was just curious if there's anything that, from a legal perspective, that would restrict that being something that is considered prior to the approval of a development, even if it's not the current practice? Is there a reason that it couldn't be part of the process to consider based on what the community, perceived community need is?
Yeah, again, I'd let Lindsay answer that. But I don't think we don't tell a developer what they can do or whatnot. It's up to what they think will bring them margin and what their niche is or whatever. So I don't think we have dictated that to developers.
We have, we have not, yeah, Matt is correct that we have not dictated that as I'm reviewing and doing a word search in our code right now. There is some zoning codes that require a little bit of a different approach to development requirements if they're proposing senior housing. But there's nothing that we have in code that restricts what they're allowed to put in their HOA and CCNRs at this point.
We were in discussion with a developer out of Spokane, but they're across the whole Pacific Northwest. We were looking at a park on Hendrickson. And a developer got kind of in the middle of our negotiation and tried to wrestle about half of that acreage away from us. But they were nice folks, and they do a nice project. And the product is really nice and high-end. And so we had a great relationship going with them. And we're trying to figure out, okay, well, now that you've wiggled into taking half of our park away, let's at least coordinate and make sure that whatever we do, we do together, and it looks nice and beautiful. And it was a senior housing apartment sort of development, very nice. And I think it would have been very attractive, even though it was kind of an apartment sort of living. It was 4, you know, 55 and above. And I can see a lot of people in town wanting to sell their big house and not do yard work and want to, if not move into a townhouse like Sunland, to move into an apartment sort of setting. It had all kinds of amenities and a very nice living and a reasonable market-priced, you know, value.
So can still, can still sort of have that domino effect or chain reaction that still opens up housing.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Anything opens up as people move around and change and die and move out. And, you know, all inventory is good right now.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Want to move into the comprehensive plan overview?
Sure, this is a, this is a real important one. And let me again have Amy throw that slide up. We just tried to summarize it in one slide. But again, I'll let Lindsay give you all the details. She's done this in several of her previous lives and positions prior to coming to Squim. But this is a high-level description of it. It's required by the state that we do this every 10 years. It will be a 20-year plan. And again, so it's very strategic. You know, you'll wonder, how can anything be very good more than 10 years out? But they require us to make it 20 years. We started in January. Of course, every community or municipality hires a consultant that does this specifically. They, you know, there's a lot of companies that specifically are employed to put together comprehensive plans. So we hired our consultant, and they started in January. It's the same consultant that's doing Port Angeles. I think they've done Port Townsend. I think they're also assisting the county. So they're, and they've done it here before for the city. So they're a known entity. Anyway, they began in January, and so they'll be done by mid-next year. It's really, there's multiple parts to the comp plan, as you can see in five. It's, oh, that doesn't, that, you know, that talks about the public participation, excuse me. And maybe Lindsay can talk about it. I think, I can't remember all the chapters or all the topics that they will address in that comp plan. But it is very comprehensive, housing being one of them. But growth and, you know, some of the things that you're interested in, I think, as a board with future population numbers and all those kinds of things. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of show you that we're in the middle of that. And I, we could easily, they're very, very, they just got done doing a three-day workshop down at Guy Cole. It ran three different consecutive days and then had studios at night kind of for the residents to participate in surveys and a lot of different things. They would probably love to come over and present to you all and get your input as well. That's, that's part of what they're employed to do is to talk to as many people as they can to get a sense of what your thoughts are on the community and where you think it needs to go. So I'd just throw that out. Lindsay, do you want to fill in the gaps?
I'll just add a little more. So what is specific to the 2025 comprehensive plan update is that it is a major periodic update. The city and Washington State Growth Management Act allows annual amendments to your comprehensive plan. But they mandate every 10 years, you update your whole comprehensive plan for what's called concurrency planning for your capital infrastructure as well as your transportation and land use infrastructure. They've added some new laws with the recent sessions in legislature. So we will be doing a major update to our housing element, a major update to a new element on climate change that we're working very closely with some hazard mitigation planning with the county as well as regional municipalities. We will be looking at our land capacity analysis to identify what is the total capacity based upon our current zoning regulations and standards. And then we, part of the housing element, we'll have to address how to provide that housing for the different economic sectors of our communities. So back to kind of that first conversation you had, that will be something that will be again to be discussed. So if you have ideas or solutions, I'm just, you'll probably get sick of hearing it from me over the next 18, 12 to 18 months. But please go to that squimimagine.org website. There is a lot of information there. But there's also a lot of information in how to participate and/or contact up on the top corner is going to be your ability to either feedback in the mini-poll survey and/or send more specific direct communication to the consultant team as they're looking at what direction does the community of Squim and our regional providers recognize that the community needs to go in. So this will be a continuing project over time. It will be briefed to the Planning Commission in late summer, early fall. And we're really probably getting into the meat of the policies in November, October, November, December, January timeframe. And if you have any questions, I'm available as well.
Yeah, I was just wondering, listening to the school's strategic plan, listening to your comprehensive plan, and making sure we're speaking the same language. Our strategic plan describes how, what we want the average or all of our students to be able to do when they leave. What do those students look like? What are they able to do? Our facilities, our long-range facilities plan sounds a little bit more like your comprehensive plan. Do you have a plan, what your vision for the city, what kind of city do we want? What will be the living experience? And because of that, here's the infrastructure we need.
So the way that the school district works is similar to the way that the municipality works. The comprehensive plan is our overarching leading document that feeds into Public Works' capital facilities plan, the transportation planning documents, as well as, you know, what the, you know, other financial planning documents that are between a six- to 12-year window. So we have our comprehensive plan and our capital facilities planning. And then it moves into our municipal code, which is the how we get to where we're visioning. And so the code is what I would consider equivalent to your kind of strategic plan, it sounds like, where our comprehensive plan is the vision that the capital facilities plans then implement.
Yeah, so you have a very extensive capital improvement color, CIP, plan. And it's a six-year plan that breaks down every single project. So you're right, you know, where are we going to put sidewalks? Where are we, what streets are we going to, are we going to resurface? Where do we need water and sewer? It's a very intense capital improvement plan, broken out by, it's got a really nice methodology for how, what gets on the list and where on the list it sits, whether it's this year or next year. And a lot of it has to do with funding, but a lot of it has to do with priorities. Say, school, you know, streets and other things. So I think, and again, that CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and the Transportation Improvement Plan are part of the comprehensive.
Exactly. They feed from the policies and the direction adopted in the comprehensive plan.
Crayons included.
And we do have our vision and goals on the wall over there. And I think all of that work is supposed to fit into there, too. And I just wanted to make a comment about housing and long-term planning. And I come from Indian country, and we don't plan any less than 10 years out. So fixing the housing problem, it's like when you need to go on a diet. It didn't take three months to get into this crisis. It's going to take us a while to get out of it. So every little thing we do helps. And sometimes incremental change is the way you get to solving a problem. And so I appreciate you guys coming here and talking to us today and learning more about your strategic planning and letting us share with you some of the work. And I hope to see some partnerships in the future. I do want to ask to think about, again, what are the ways that we can partner to make sure that we're making sure, make sure that we're having enough activities for our youth in the city? You know, it's summer now, you know, and we've had these guys with us for five months now? Six months? And getting to hear all the great things. But I know that there's also kids that are struggling and need that connection to community because that's what heals people who struggle and have traumas. So I'm also interested in hearing about those kinds of things, and I know that's for another day. Thank you.
I think that's a good segue into item six around the table. So if anything, anybody has anything else that they want to bring up?
I'll just, I'll just share how much I appreciate being able to set this up. And hopefully, this is the first of many because I think this type of collaboration is important, certainly for our community, but also for our students, for our schools, for our upcoming goals. So, and I also just want to recognize, I don't think he was here for introductions, but I see Dan has joined us, so I just wanted to mention that. Welcome, I'm glad to see you. But, but yeah, just, I'm excited about the continued partnership.
Harmony?
Thank you. Just wanted, definitely wanted to echo some gratitude for this meeting today and for getting this conversation started. Thank you all so much for all your leadership and all the great work that we all do in the community. Something that was brought to me recently by a community member that's been something that I've been meaning to do some research on and reach out to you all about. And this dovetails with climate resilience. Um, and this dovetails with, um, climate resilience and, um, just general community resilience is, um, to find out more about, um, the school district's reunification plans for, um, heavens forbid, the big one, the Cascadia event or anything like that. So, um, looking forward to, um, uh, finding out more about that. I don't know if that's something that you guys can speak to succinctly. Maybe this would not be the time to, to respond, but maybe we could follow up via email. That would be, um, something that a community member has asked me about and I didn't know how to answer that. So thank you so much.
Uh, reunification planning is our primary safety team goal in our school district right now. So we have a small team that is working on that. And we have identified a protocol through the I Love You Guys Foundation. I don't know if you know that, but you could look that up. And they have a, uh, very complete reunification, uh, system that we will be implementing. In the meantime, we have sent out, uh, scouts basically to speak to the reunification locations that have been utilized in the past to verify that they would still be open to us, uh, showing up in case of an emergency. As far as the big one though, uh, we do have representation that meets with the EOC every month. And so we are working with them around, uh, the different training that they're recommending and making sure that we're thinking about how our, uh, school buildings, if indeed we do have buildings that are standing, uh, we have an old campus. We could be utilized as a site for different logistics. We want to partner around that. Our CTE Center of Excellence that will be built, that is another aspect of it that we're thinking ahead about. So the planning is going, uh, strong and well, and I'd be happy to meet with people on the side about that as well.
Thank you so much, Reagan. Really appreciate it.
Anything else from anybody?
I was going to say one thing on the, um, when you're saying, what can we do to help with housing? I think there's some unique stuff that we have to realize is unique to Squim, that there's not a whole lot we can do. Like you said, we can't force developers to develop things that they don't want to develop. And we have unique things that, you know, only business out here that I struggle with, you know? Getting supplies and materials, the, um, consistent workforce, you know, to do products. The, uh, we're kind of isolated out here a little bit, and so everything costs more to do out here. And then when we look at that affordable housing, um, I think COVID took, took a, took a hit to us there because some of the rentals that we have, that affordable housing type of tenant were the ones that we weren't collecting rent from during COVID. So when we look at, we're going to bring more at, there, there is a, and there's nothing we can do about it. There is that, that hesitancy to get involved in that, knowing that there could become a time where you can't collect your rent on those properties. So when you sell the properties, it's great, but when you do rentals, now you're, now you're locked into what you can collect and what the state will allow you to collect. And maybe they tell you like during COVID, you can't. So I think that stuff, we can't do anything about, right? It's there, there's laws around and we're, and we're stuck with those. So I look at these challenges and it is challenging, you know? How do we incentivize? And I think you hit the nail on the head, you, you take these increments. You, you, anything helps and you, and you just keep chipping away at it because we didn't get here overnight and we're not going to fix it overnight. So I do agree with you in that. And I think the little chips, the way that we do, I think is, is good. And I think it, and it does help. That's all I have on that part.
I would just add to that. I know that we can't do, um, we can't fix everything, but I also think that, um, the lobbying aspect and advocacy in the state legislature is a way to change those laws and that we could have a lot of, um, you know, impetus from having the school board and the city working together, um, promoting real change in Olympia. So that's what I would say.
Another thing we could do that will have longer effects is attract some light manufacturing. We do not have the types of transportation for heavy manufacturing. We have a very narrow state highway. We, we, the barges are way far away. We don't have a big airport. We don't have a railroad. But we could do tech, technology. We could do some type of light manufacturing so that there would be jobs for people besides working in, as a policeman or a teacher or a, a medical person. So that goes along with the housing because people have to have a reason to move here. So it's not just housing, it's, it's just far reaching. And like Vicky said, or Brandon, that we should have done something 10 years ago. I mean, we can't keep saying that, but I'm going to say it. We should have started doing something 10 years ago. So now we have tomorrow's a new day. We just have to do something and move on. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, if there's any, uh, follow-up or action plans needed? I know here probably the next few months, we will be probably drafting our legislative, uh, agenda. So I'm sure we'll reach out and, uh, hopefully we can work together to make sure we get your input on that again this year.
Yeah, I think there could be some benefits to, and we do kind of the, the same work. So if, if there's ways we can collaborate on that, I think, and yes, shared goals, it might be, yeah, might be that much more powerful.
Yeah. I mean, it certainly seems like it would be to everybody's benefit for the city to also emphasize with the legislature, the problems and inequities in education funding. And I mean, it's obviously, it's a real problem for our district and for our families. And I mean, I don't know what the full range is of the issues that the city's willing to, to lobby on. But, um, that would be fantastic if we could get on the same page on that.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, thank everybody for coming.
Thank you. Have a greedy afternoon.